All right. We're going to call to order the town of Lake Clark Shores' second public hearing, 2021-2022 Town Budget, September 28, 2021. Welcome, everybody. Happy to see you all here. Mary, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul Schellhupe.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schellhupe.
Here.
President Pro Tem Greg Frubold.
Here.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavon.
Pastor Stan, would you be so kind as to lead us in invocation?
It would be my honor, sir.
And then the Pledge of Allegiance thereafter?
I could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just occurred to me when I was sitting over there, if I can take a pastoral privilege.
Absolutely.
I just completed 12 years being here in Lake Clark Shore. It's a blink, right?
Yeah.
I feel, I still feel like I'm the newbie. And I just want to say what an honor it has been to be a part of this town, that we've felt welcomed right from the get-go, and we always felt like we were always working together to care for this community. And so I just want to say that to each and every one of you. Appreciate you as, as council members, but also as friends. Thank you so very much. If I could have the, everyone stand with us, I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much. "It is God who works in you to will and to act in order to fulfill His good purpose. Do everything without grumbling and arguing, so that you may become blameless and pure, children of God without fault in a warped and crooked generation. Then you will shine among them like stars in the sky as you hold firmly to the Word of life. Heavenly Father, we gather in this place and declare we trust in you, and we seek you. We ask for your intervention, your divine leading. And Father, might you inspire us and encourage us? Give us, Father, a good accomplishment, that you would receive honor and glory. In thy precious and holy name, amen."
Amen.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Thank you very much for being a part of our community. You do so much for us, and it's all very much appreciated. All right, we'll start the second public hearing for the 2021-22 budget. Mr. Clark, would you like to make a presentation?
I would be happy to. A couple of opening comments on the budget. This is the 11th budget I've prepared for the town of Lake Clark Shores, and by far, it's the most challenging. We start the budgeting process typically in May, and we spend months balancing competing priorities because nobody has enough money. So we work on balancing competing priorities, finding different ways to do things, looking for other people's money, and we get to tonight, where we're going to have the second budget hearing and hopefully passage of the 2022 fiscal year budget. Our core mission is still the same: protecting police services, code compliance, utility services, permitting services, and performing our general government duties. We have five funds that we use to track our money. We have the general fund. We have the enterprise fund, which is used for the utility. We have the infrastructure surtax fund. We have the CRA fund. And this year, we started with the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. We keep those monies separate so that we have easier time of accounting for them when the auditors come in and want to check on what we're doing. So tonight, I'm going to briefly present the five funds and some of the activity that we have going on in each of the funds. We'll start out with the general fund. The general fund has very limited capital expenditures. We don't have a lot of extra money in the general fund. We are looking at two new vehicle leases, one for the police department and one for the administration. We have budgeted special events beginning in December of this year with the tree lighting and the parade. Whether we get to do those events because of our COVID challenges has, we'll have to see when the time arrives, but we are budgeting for them for the barbecue, for the late cleanup, for the fishing tournament, for fishing camp and tennis camp, and all the other activities that, that we do. The general fund is a balanced budget this year. There is no change to the millage rate. It is 6.2798. It has been 6.2798 for, I think, 13 years now. It is 5.06% higher than the rollback rate, which would be 5.9775. Our current year taxable value is $300.1 million, which is up 5.12% over last year. In the general fund, we are proposing merit increases of 3.5%. That's consistent with the collective bargaining agreement we have with the police department. Our garbage collection rates will go up 3% this year per our contract with Waste Management. The utility fund, we're going to transfer $180,000 out of the utility fund to the town. There are two new vehicle leases proposed. I shouldn't say new vehicles. We are replacing two of our existing vehicles with two new vehicles through the lease program. If you remember, that program is done based on the optimum time to sell our used vehicles. And with our GMC pickups that we have, we're turning those over now annually, and we're making about $2,500 on the deal. Because of the cut rate that government can buy those vehicles at, we're actually turning a little bit of a profit. In the utility budget, we are going to finish and implement our rate study. We're going to finish the new 12-inch water main project on Lawrence Road down on Seminole Manor, and we're going to complete the utility admin building. We also have in the capital budget continued engineering for the Micah West Septic to Sewer Project, engineering for the master vacuum station, and some pipeline R&amp;R. We will need to borrow money this year for utilities. We're looking at state revolving fund monies, and that will probably occur in the May-June timeframe to get those monies. The infrastructure surtax, we're anticipating revenues of $226,000. We have planned expenditures of 1.1 million. That's because the bridge will actually get constructed in 2022. I should have the complete design package ready for bid on my desk by the end of November, so we can go out for bid and be prepared to start whenever DOT says we can start. Our estimated carryover when that project is done, or the projects we have planned for next year, is $320,000, and that's consistent with the plan I put together earlier in the year showing how we were going to spend those monies and when we were going to spend those monies. The CRA fund, we're expecting revenues of about $72,000, and we have planned expenditures of $72,000. That includes some consultant services and continuation of our beautification and our business incentive programs. And finally, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, our, the last of our five funds. We got $908,298 in this year. We plan to get that same amount in next year, probably in August. We have planned expenditures of $625,000 next year. Our goal, the, the way the rescue plan was put together, it's very limited as to what we can spend money on. The town will likely only be able to spend money on utilities, specifically water, wastewater, stormwater. And we want to stay away from a federal special purpose audit. So we have four years to spend the money. We're going to spend that $1.8 million over four years at about 600 or 650,000 a year. That's the plan that will keep us out of the audit. We'll move our utility projects forward that way. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have about the budget.
Thank you very much, Dan. Any council comments? We'll start with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, Mr. Clark, just a quick question. Could you tell the audience what some of the ARPA fund has been used for already?
We, we spent about $120,000 this year, and that was for upgrading our IT system. We use Munis from Tyler Technologies as our software for utility billing and for accounts payable and accounts receivable. Our auditor has told us that that would be a reasonable expense for ARPA monies. So we rebuilt our servers and installed some new Munis software with that initial 120. I don't have the exact number, so I set the budget at 120. It'll probably be very near that.
Okay. Was, now, what about any of the intersections? What was, where did that money come from?
That's infrastructure surtax money.
Okay. And that was allocated for this year and already used for this year? And do we have similar plans with that infrastructure surtax money for next year? I wasn't really completely sure. I mean, you said drainage repair and road maintenance. Would that be the same type of road maintenance that we're seeing going on now?
Correct.
Okay, just different areas?
We began, not many people drive on the north side of town, but the north side of town is least impacted by sewers. So we began our paving project three years ago, and we have paved most of the north side of town. We also paved the estates and the roadways in the, in the estates. And now we're looking at Westlake. So I hope this fall, we'll be able to take advantage of the 2022 paving program. And the goal is to pave Westlake from the Gregory Canal to the L9 Canal, which is the next canal down.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Frubold?
No. You've covered everything.
President Frubold?
Only one question, Mr. Clark. Limited parks and recreation expenditures, any ideas are still up in the air? Just some, few dollars in there?
About 7,000.
7,000? All right.
It, it'll probably be held until the very end to make sure that we don't have any maintenance issues that we didn't anticipate that go over budget.
Very good.
Vice Mayor Sheldon?
No, I mentioned, I met with Mr. Clark earlier, and it looks like he did a great job again. Again, thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
They do an amazing job.
I liked the way this was laid out this time. This was good.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a new format. It was good.
Okay.
All right. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you very much, Dan and staff, for all your hard work on this.
We do have, by the way, an amazing staff.
No doubt about it. Have you received any emailed or written questions in?
Let me check.
While you're checking on that, let's hold off. Let me see if there's any audience comments, because maybe somebody might give him more time to ask a question. Any comments from the audience, questions from the audience? Okay. I didn't buy the remote attendees much time, but he wrote in questions.
We have five remote attendees, and there are no questions.
All right. So we are the taxing authority, the town of Lake Clark Shores. The rollback rate is 5.9775. The millage rate considered to be levied is 6.2798, which is 5.06% higher than the rollback rate of 5.9775. Mary, would you mind reading the title of the millage resolution?
Resolution 2021-31, adoption of the 2021-2022 milit rate, a resolution of the town council of the town of, I'm sorry, of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, setting and fixing a milit rate for fiscal year 2021-2022 at 6.2798 mils.
May I have a motion to approve? All in favor?
All right.
All right, Mary, can we have a reading of Resolution 2021-32?
Adoption of 2021-2022 budget, a resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Can I have a motion?
Move.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries. That concludes our budget hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a, it's a long road to get to this point, but it's, it's a much necessary road to travel. All right, we are moving on to the town council meeting, sitting as the local planning agency, September 28, 2021. Can I get a call to order, please? Or, sorry, roll call?
Mayor Paul Schellhupe.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schellhupe.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Frubold.
Here.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavon.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. All right, well, let's have a presentation. Dan, are you going to be doing the presentation?
I think Mr. Fleishman is.
All right, this is a presentation of the Ordinance 2021-10, amending Policy 3.10.1 of the land use element and adding element 13, property rights.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Jim Fleishman, the town's planning consultant. I've, I've been the town's planning consultant for many years, although I don't have too many opportunities to come out and make presentations. And I, I always relish the opportunity, so I'm very happy to be here tonight.
Happy to have you here. Thank you for coming.
The, the item on the agenda tonight is Conference of Plan Amendment 2021-01, and it consists of two amendments to the conference plan. Both of those amendments are presented in Attachment A of Ordinance 2021-10, which you should have in front of you. On, on page three of, of Attachment A is the First Amendment, and it's a revision of Policy 3.10.1 of the future land use plan amendment. The, the amendment will allow residentially zoned parcels fronting on Forest Hill Boulevard with, with frontage on Forest Hill Boulevard of 75 feet and frontage on a secondary street of 40 feet to, to be developed for low-impact professional office uses, either developed or redeveloped. As I said, the current zoning of those parcels is residential. The, the ability to, to develop or redevelop those parcels for, for office will, will provide a, a land use buffer essentially from, from the high traffic on Forest Hill Boulevard to the more low-intensity residential uses to the, either to the north or, or the south of those, those properties. The, in reality, the amendment only affects two parcels. The, the first is 6900 Westlake, which essentially is the southeast corner of Forest Hill Boulevard and Westlake Drive. And the other is 1815 Forest Hill Boulevard, which is the Christian and Monastery Alliance Church on, on the north side of Forest Hill Boulevard out, out to the west. As I mentioned, the, the amendment is presented on page three of Ordinance 2021-110. And in, in, we had several, several revisions and amendments to it, and I went back and forth with, with Mary several times. And, and unfortunately, the, the final version of it did not get in the, in the attachment A that you have in front of you. So, so I'd like to, I'd like to pass out what I propose the final language be. And it's, it's really quite similar to, to what's in there now, but.
Can you just look at this real quick? Is this not, is this not what we have, what Okay, so.
Like I said, a couple of.
Thank you.
I didn't mean, I'd like to do a few. It certainly doesn't gain. But I just want to make sure that it's.
It's exact before it goes to the town council. If, probably the best way to do it is, is to take, is to open up Ordinance 2021-10 and go to page three.
What I just handed you, right? This is page?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then, and then put that, that's, that's Exhibit A, and then the first one is land use element revision, objective 3.10. The, the amendment itself is, is Policy 3.1 or 3.10.1, and that starts out in the ordinance with the following language: During fiscal year 2002, inventory and redesignate existing office structures along Forest Hill Boulevard that are classified as multiple-family residential to commercial on the future land use map. Well, that, that language was actually stricken by a land use plan amendment that, that the town made in 2017. So when, when they struck the language, they replaced it with the word reserved or for, for future policy. And if you look at the language that I passed out, the, the proposed language starts out with the word reserved, which is now being stricken. So, so that's the first change. And, and the second, the second change really is, is adding a final sentence. If, if you go to the end of Proposed 3.10.1, where we say that any, any development or redevelopment under this policy is subject to site plan review in the following standards, that the version that's in the, the ordinance does not call for site plan review, which in, in this situation of development or redevelopment of offices certainly should go through site plan review. So, so those are the, those are both changes that we propose be adopted by, or recommended for approval by the local planning agency.
I just want to, to both versions I have, do have the same last sentence. Such development or redevelopment is subject to.
The following.
Oh, the following standards, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I understand. Got it.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're just making sure, sure that it has to go through the site plan review process.
So basically, land use revision, objective 3.1, that stays.
Yeah.
But everything starting from policy down, you want replaced with this piece of paper you just gave us.
That's exactly right.
Got it.
That's exactly right. And, and when you get down to friends A, B, C, D, and E, there's no changes.
Okay. And now, what you're proposing, that, that wouldn't change the ability for a single-family residential home to be on the 6900 property, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. That just gives it another option that if, if it comes to the point where the property owner is, is interested in, in redeveloping, he can, he could convert to, to a low-impact office use. And, and that's primarily because of his location fronting on Forest Hill Boulevard with large traffic volumes passing right in front of his house. And, and because of the fact that it goes through site plan amendment, now you can add conditions in there related to fencing and landscaping, which, which might add better buffer to the residential areas to the south.
And all of those issues would be dealt with in the event something was to be built there?
Yes.
People applied, whoever it was, applied to build a fence or do whatever happened?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
That's true. This, this is just giving them the, the ability to apply. That's, that's all it is.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. And that would be subject to us sitting as the land planning agency?
Oh, yes, yes, for sure.
Just want to make that clear.
Yeah. Okay, the, the Second Amendment is on page four of, of the ordinance. And that's, that's a result of the state legislature making, making a revision to, to the state comprehensive planning law that, that requires that all comprehensive plan amendments or comprehensive plans in the state of Florida include what's called a property rights amendment or, or element, property rights element. This is a new element to, to the comprehensive plan as required by, by, by state law. And the reason why we are including it with, with the previous amendment is that the legislation says that, that this new element has to be created prior to any new comprehensive plan amendments that, that are initiated after July 1st of this year. There's, the legislation does allow both amendments to be included in the same ordinance, but, but we could not have adopted the First Amendment without this, this element also being included. We, the state legislature says, prior to doing anything else, all local governments have to adopt this property rights element. And what, what I did was, was essentially take the wording out of the state, state legislation and reorganize it and, and craft it to, to fit the format of, of the town's comprehensive plan. So that, this is exactly the language that, that's in the state legislation, no more, no less. And so, so it's, it's something that, that we really, really have to do.
Is, is there anything in the proposed ordinance that would impact the church on the north side?
No, no, it just.
Carrying on the way they are?
No, 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 not at all. It, it just gives them the same redevelopment essentially opportunity to either redevelop as an office or potentially create an office component within the, within the existing buildings or redevelop a portion of the property. And, and with that, including my, my handout, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment 2020-2021-01.
Inclusive of your amendment that you handed today?
Yes.
Which is 3.10.1. Thank you very much. Does anybody have, council have any questions for Mr. Fleishman? Thank you very much, Jim. Good seeing you. Thank you. Great work on this. Much appreciated. Mary, can we have a reading of Ordinance
An ordinance of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, approving the following amendments to the town of Lake Clark Shores Comprehensive Plan. Number one, the revision policy one, excuse me, 310.1 to the land use element to provide for improved transitional uses on Forest Hill Boulevard. And the two, the addition of comprehensive plan amount element 13, property rights, providing for conflicts, separability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you, Mary. Before we take any action, is there any audience comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, so we need to make sure that the public has the opportunity to speak. However, right now, there are no questions. There is nothing in the chat, and there are no hands raised.
Anybody here in the audience want to, yes, Mr. Kukarni?
I'm no.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Fuqua.
Mr. Fuqua, my apologies. Oh, that's right. Now that you take your mask off.
About the property on Forest Hill, okay, that's what we're talking about. And my backyard fronts to that property.
Can you state your name and address or?
Yes, sorry. My name is Hamid Fuqua. I live on Clarissa Circle. Yes, sorry, my name is Hamid Fakwa, I live on Carissa Circle sixty nine eleven, I've been there fifty years now. And since you guys, not you guys, but since that building was demolished, I couldn't believe the noise from the traffic. Penetrating into my property, I can't open the windows on that side at all, day or night. I didn't think that house covered so much noise for me. And I would like some relief from that, either in a form of a wall. Or when you guys approve a new project there.
Where where's your property in relation to that one?
I'm on the sixty nine eleven Carissa Circle on the inside.
Okay.
And it backs up to that property. And really, if you come there and if you open the window.
Yeah.
Traffic on ninety five day and night, day and night.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the prior discussions going back over a year ago when we were discussing this. If if it wasn't a single family home and it was a, you know, limited professional space, wasn't there going to be a requirement for a wall to be built up?
That was the discussion that was going on, and I think to that point, that's why. Mr. Fleishman wanted to make sure that we got the right version of that three ten one in there because. That ensures that site planning has to occur, and we have the opportunity at that point to require that wall to go in.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the way I'm looking from what I'm hearing today, that's a long term project by the time you guys invite somebody to build something there. But I'm looking for relief and you may, he's this fronts your side too, right?
Yeah.
And you have the same problem.
Yeah.
He's on the West Lake Drive, the very last house.
Yeah, he neighbors the property.
Yes, so I'm just asking if there's any. Relief in meantime. I can understand the cost and all that, but I don't know what is in in the project for that.
Certainly, it's something that we can discuss with Dan or you can discuss with Dan after tonight or, you know, later on this week.
Okay, Mary.
No, I don't need to add anything, but it really has changed the ability to use the backyard.
Yes. I used to.
Breaks and whatever, I'm surprised we don't have accidents at West Lake and Forest Hill, simply because.
Would you mind? Yeah. Would you mind, you want to come up and speak?
It it really limits the use of the backyard that side of the house.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, my name is Mary Fakwa, I live at sixty nine eleven Carissa Circle, and I have lived there for over fifty years. Okay, since that house has been demolished, I understand it was good because there were a lot of homeless people that were wandering in and out and showering and whatever. But since then, the noise makes it impossible to use the north side of our our yard. Okay, then that's not a lot, and I know it's just us. But plus there are trees there that are intruding into and breaking down our fence. Because it's got nothing on there. Okay, and I'm getting ready to put in a new fence, and do I put it in around these trees? Do I cut the trees down at my own expense when it's not my property? To put a fence in so that hopefully I can use that side of my house. There needs to be something a little bit more solid than we can discuss with people. Okay, discussing with planning and whatever, we're you know, we're just one homeowner. Okay, but we've lived here long enough and we've not had any issues like this. Okay, and I would like to have something a little more firm, not a promise, not a commitment. But a little more firm in part of the planning that something gets done about that. Okay, these plants are not on my side, it's an extra expense to take them down so that I can put a fence around my house. Or do I take them out and hand you guys the bill? Tell me what I do.
I would encourage you to to get with Mr. Clark, and I'm sure there's a. Something that can be worked out.
Are there's those are those calucias back on by you now?
Palms.
Palms?
Yeah, the little, I don't know what kind of.
Something up along there, we we turfed it and did that kind of stuff.
Yeah, but that's toward the front.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to, I don't go by there every day, but I I know.
I do.
That we were talking, well, I go by there almost every other day, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I I am, that's going to have to be up to the administration there and then.
Right.
We'll act on it.
Have you ever discussed this with with Mr. Clark or any staff?
I've not really been participating in a lot of these.
Well, not at the meeting, just like in general.
No, 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 if you don't have a problem, you don't bring it anywhere. If you got a problem, you bring it to the boss. Okay, you guys are the boss. Okay, so I can talk to the gentleman and see what can be done. But it's it's preventing me right now from even putting up a new fence, which I badly need. I badly need, okay? And that what I'm getting for bids. To take all that stuff out makes it almost impossible to do just a regular fence. So. That's it, my first meeting.
Well, welcome, thank you for being here, thank you for sharing with us your concerns and issues. And will you be able to get with them and see what can be done?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? On what was discussed, any written questions, hands raised from the virtual audience?
We have more audience comments?
I'm about to ask.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, any more audience comments, would you like to? Come on up.
There's a street light on the end of Carissa Circle on the dead end, which is paid by the city, I believe, or. You know, the corner lights everywhere are paid by.
Which way does it face, property or the street?
The street.
That's us.
That's you guys, but one before that, I've been paying for that light for forty five years. And I've never asked you guys for any help, because my kids were young back forty five years.
Right, right.
I put a light up there, but after all these years, I wish that you guys can pick up that expense for me. I've been paying it for, I've never complained about it, I can still afford to pay for it, but it's been my kids, my youngest one is fifty years old now. You know, so I put the lights on for, so I just want to see if you guys can at least consider that.
Well, again, we'll certainly discuss, I haven't been, I haven't been down there to pay attention to that light.
It's eleven dollars a month, that's what I pay FPL.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but I've been paying it for fifty years. And all the other street lights that are, they're all paid by you guys through the.
Right.
Then, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have a comment from Dina Schmidt. There should be more of an opportunity for the residents to have a voice before a decision is made, most residents prefer single family use only. Just a comment.
Okay. Ms. Schmidt, do you have any questions or? Is there a way for them to virtually interact versus just typing in a question, like, can't they speak to us?
If they, yeah, I mean, she raises her hand, we can talk to her.
Okay.
You can talk to her.
All right. Ms. Schmidt, yeah, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten to the town council.
Second.
All right, seconded by council member phone, all in favor?
All right.
Yeah. Ordinance passes. All right. We already did audience comments, any more audience comments on the meeting? No, all right, public hearing is adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. This now has to go through a process, so when it comes back for second reading, it won't be next month.
Okay.
It'll probably be ninety days, maybe a hundred and twenty days before everybody has a chance to look at it, comment on it, and get it back to us.
Yeah, this is the first step, this isn't final. For those who were wondering. All right, we're on to the last meeting.
Who who motioned to adjourn this meeting, I'm sorry?
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you, Mary, I missed that part. All right, now we're going to call to order the regular town council meeting. For September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Can I have a roll?
Yes, excuse me. Mayor Paul Shaw who?
President.
Vice Mayor Robert Shaw who?
Still here.
President Proton Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Bautine Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavon.
Here.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
All in favor? Take a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We have no presentations, all right, moving on to quadri judicial proceedings. Seventy four thirty two Pine Tree Lane variance request, we have a presentation. By the town regarding the request and recommendation of the zoning board of adjustments by Charlie Shack.
Mr. Mayor and town council, this is a request for a variance for seventy four thirty two Pine Tree Lane. The applicants have requested a two point five foot side variance to construct a carport. Having a seven and a half foot setback from the side property line. The code requires a ten foot side yard setback, and obviously, if you subtract the two point five. From the ten, you end up with the seven point five, so they are requesting to be able to place this. Carport. Two point five feet into the side yard setback, and that requires the granting of a variance.
And.
They have submitted the appropriate application, it was reviewed by the. Zoning board and the zoning board. On July twenty first, twenty twenty one, found that because there is an additional seven point five feet of land between the side yard property line. And the structure granting the variance met the requirements of the section of the town's code. And that. Zoning board order is in your agenda packet. So they are recommending approval.
This is a carport, not an additional garage. Oh, it's a garage?
What I read said carport, I'm sorry.
I say here is carport.
I saw garage.
I did see a garage too, it was side setback for a garage. It was, but it is a question requesting two point five side variance to construct a carport having a seven point five. Setback from the side property line with relief from the ten foot setback required in the section one twenty five.
Let's see what the actual application says.
Yeah, it says. Type of variance set side setback for garage.
Yeah, one car garage.
Yeah.
So it's just some of their remarks.
Yeah, it looks like a summary, just.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, Charlie, what what is the find of fact page in our packet? It actually says recommendation, this the least use of land for this variance request, there is no recommendation at. This time, and then the next page. Is the actual order. From the ZBA, so what's this kind of middle page here, first page, it says July twenty first, twenty twenty one?
This was presented to the zoning board and. The town made no recommendation to the zoning board. So they they did not have a staff recommendation when they considered the petition.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have the applicants here. Would you all like to come on up and? Discuss with us the variance request?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, so my name is Nick Octavi, I live at seven four three two Pine Tree Lane, I've lived there for about three years, moved in two thousand and eighteen. We're a growing family, and we were looking for this variance because we're looking for a garage that would be a good fit car. The garage that we currently have today is ten foot, and in today's day and age, cars cannot comfortably fit in. So when we went to an architect into a builder, they said a twelve feet is the minimum that you guys can provide, and the reason that we're asking for the variance. Is because if we were to just extend the existing garage, it'd be major, major construction, brand new roof and major construction on the actual property itself.
So you're basically going to just add it on, add the roof to extend further over and do a middle door in between the existing garage and the new garage?
Yeah, so what we would do is if you if you look on the plans. So you could see that we're requesting just enough of a variance to to facilitate the twelve feet and then the twenty feet back. Now, the I believe in here, it shows the roof, so the roof is actually going to make it so it looks like it was meant to be there. Trying to make it so it looks like it's supposed to be there and built originally with the home. And then we also are going to add a storage behind it, but we're not going to ask for a variance in the storage just because we don't need it.
All right, and what do your neighbors say?
Um, all the neighbors up front were fine, the only objection that we got was from a neighbor who's actually, his house is up contract right now, and he should be moving in.
That's one way to. So does he, does he about the property to the to the north or the south, or is he about the area where the where the garage would actually be built?
He does.
And he's objected to it?
He's objected because I believe the letter states that it will negatively affect his property value. Yeah. He he said in his letter that the people in Lake Clark like larger lots. But actually, having a two car garage will add value to the house and the neighborhood. That's just my two cents.
What do you know, you're not a real.
I don't know, I don't know, I just, I want to throw that out there.
I didn't actually see the, maybe I I accidentally flipped past it, is there a written objection, Dan, that that was provided?
Yes. It was after the lectures.
Mr. Shanks would like to speak, he's got his hand raised and he's the neighbor to the north.
All right. Well, before before he speaks, can we, any questions for the applicant?
From the trees on the north side, can you say?
Yes. Yeah, so right now, there's trees that blocking all of you.
Right, you're going to put up a fence?
We have a fence that's already up, we weren't planning on putting a fence next to it, because I didn't think there was a need. If it's something that would make it more considerable, then we would not be opposed to it.
And I I did read it, but the email doesn't say he objects to the variance or requests that we don't grant it, it just says he thinks it'll impact the property values negatively.
Yeah.
That's just not an objection, that's just a comment. Any other questions for the applicant?
Nope.
All right, let's hear from Mr. Shanks. Yes, is that his name?
Yes.
That meant the individual reasons in.
Mr. Shanks, can you speak, we've unmuted you on your end, can you check your mute on your side? He's typed in the comments that I object. But we don't seem to be hearing anything out of him.
Can we just double check the technology?
He had issues earlier in hearing us when everybody else could, so it may be a technical issue on his end.
Mr. Shanks, if you can hear us, is there any additional comments other than I object? Or basis for why you think it'll lower your property value and or if that's your only objection, that you think it's going to lower your property value?
He typed, we are trying to talk.
That roof line on there won't affect any line of sight either, will it?
It will not. The trees go.
Yeah, I'm looking, I know where your house is, it's.
So what do we do here in? So, what do we do here in a situation where the technology's not allowing them to talk?
Just point, I mean, we have his email.
Yeah.
And we have his objection. I mean, can't we just consider both of those?
Let's see what.
He had an opportunity to be heard.
Certainly assume that he objects very strenuously.
And the answer is yes, you can consider that. You have his written statement, the email that was submitted, and he has clarified that it's not just a comment, it is in fact an objection.
Okay, is he adding anything else, Mr. Clark?
No.
Any other council comments before we consider a motion on this issue?
I would, I'll move to the re.
Well, I guess we actually have a rebuttal. You can, you have an opportunity to rebut the objection if you'd like.
Um.
Like, do you think it's gonna negatively impact the values of the property around you?
I, I don't. I don't think it would. Like I said, his house is already for sale, and I believe it's under contract.
Okay. All right.
I'll, I'll move that we accept the, the zoning board's, the zoning board's recommendation and that we allow the variance.
All right, motion to proceed with the recommendation and accept it and allow the variance has been made, seconded by President Pro Tem Freebold. All right, all in favor? Aye. Carrie's. Variance is approved.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck with the build-out.
Thank you.
All right, no public hearings. Did we have to do any conclusions? Or is it, was a motion fine?
Motion's fine.
Okay. All right, let's move on to unfinished business. The second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero-five, amending chapter two, administration, article four, code enforcement. Mary?
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter two, administration, article four, code enforcement, in part to revise the jurisdiction of the code enforcement board and the board members vacancy and attendance, to revise the citation system by providing for hearing in front of code enforcement board instead of county court, to add options of persons cited to include hearing procedure before the board, collection and recovery of civil penalties to revise this, revise the civil penalty schedule, to provide for appeal, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Take a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Approved. And we'll have the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero-eight, amending various sections of chapter one-twenty-five zoning to include daycare as a special exception in the single-family residential district.
Okay, we do need to remember, we do have to have, allow for time for audience comments before we do the motions, but thank you.
Does anybody want to comment? Can we go backwards?
There were no comments on that.
Anybody here want to comment on the first ordinance? All right.
Thank you.
No problem. My apologies.
An ordinance of the town council at the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter one-twenty-five zoning of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores, article one in general, section one-twenty-five dash one definitions, article six, districts, division two, single-family residential district, section one-twenty-five dash two-ninety-two, special exceptions, section one-twenty-five dash three-hundred, minimum off-street loading and parking requirements. I'm so sorry. And section one-twenty-five dash three-oh-one, limitation on signs to include provisions for daycare facilities, child or adult, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mary. Any audience comments or questions? Anything written in, Dan?
So moved.
All right, take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Carrie's, we'll have the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero-nine, amending chapter one-twenty-five zoning and chapter one-twenty-one vegetation to make definitions consistent in both chapters and to clarify that grass would include artificial turf.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter one-twenty-five zoning of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, article one in general, section one-twenty-five dash one definitions, and amending chapter one-twenty-one vegetation, article two landscaping, section one-twenty-one dash nineteen definitions, to make the definitions consistent in both chapters and to clarify that grass includes artificial grass, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mary. Any comments from the audience? Questions?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's, moving on to new business, the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-one dash one-zero, amending the town of Lake Clark Shores comprehensive plan by revising policy three-point-one-zero-point-one of the land use element and adding element thirteen, property rights.
An ordinance of the town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, approving the following amendments to the town of Lake Clark Shores comprehensive plan. Number one, the revision policy three-point-ten-point-one to the land used element to provide for improved transitional uses on Forest Hill Boulevard, and two, the addition of comprehensive plan element thirteen, property rights, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, and that is that you're approving this with the revised Exhibit A that was discussed during the LPA meeting.
Okay.
The local planning agency meeting.
Right.
So be it. I'll move.
Any other? Well, well, before we vote, any questions or comments written in?
No.
All right, let's vote on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
He said so be it.
All right, now we're on to the audience comment.
If I was King Ramsay, I would say let it be written, let it be done.
For our meeting, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments?
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, no problem or pleasure. Dan, anything written in on just general audience comments, questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. No SaaS reports, council comments, starting with Councilmember Vavone.
You, you said we're gonna have the tree lighting. Did you also say the parade?
We're, we're working on it.
Okay.
Do you have a float?
I'm excited.
You have a float?
I have a golf cart.
All right, okay. No machine on top?
I can make it happen.
I like to see that.
Yeah.
You can do anything, Mr. Pavone.
President Pro Tem Freebold?
Yeah, I know this is our second meeting, so I'll make this brief. Mr. Clark, we're looking at going back into doing our, you know, community building events. Do we have any, like, idea of dates? I know this is all contingent on our numbers for COVID, however, it's a lot of planning. Or, so can we put dates on the books too, or?
Well, the, the, the tree lighting and parade is always the first Saturday of December, so that's there.
That's my question.
I think we've agreed on April third as the barbecue date. That seems to miss all of the holidays and, and, and that's as far as we've looked ahead, so.
Can I look at some dates and?
Absolutely.
Steelers out there and get with you?
Would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all.
Thanks, Mayor Schalhoo.
Yes, I was gonna, I just saw that Val Rodriguez is the mayor on this resolution, so.
Yeah, we're, we're crossing those things out.
Okay. Be that as it may, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm glad, I'm glad y'all are taking interest in the town, and I understand exactly what your concern is because the doctor reached out to me as soon as we took down the, that building, and we'll see what we can do, but please make an appointment with Dan. He's, he's pretty good at ferreting out resolutions to some unique problems. So, we'll work together, see what we can do, and my thoughts and prayers are with you, Doctor. The, looking forward to the, the boat parade, looking, that was on December the eleventh, I think. Looking forward to the tree lighting. I understand that's gonna be on December the fifth.
First Saturday in December. I can't remember the date, I'm sorry.
I'll tell you what, this is ass-sorry, and Dan, I know that this last two years have been very challenging on the budget, and I just want to commend you and staff because you guys have just done absolutely wonderful job.
Thank you.
December fourth is a Saturday, for Saturday in the month, for the record, and thank you all very, very much. Please, everyone remain safe in these trying times, and I thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any comments?
Thank you. I apologize, it was an emergency. No, I'm, I'm excited that we're moving things forward. It was so nice. So many residents have called me about just seeing some road overlay. I'm like, yay, we finally have something visible to see, so I think that's a big thing. Our new little track around here is turning out very well. I saw a bunch of golf carters going over to the plaza last week, so that's a very good decision, Dan. Thank you for getting that going so fast, you know, us tennis players and golf cart drivers love it. Other than that, that's all I have.
I want to apologize for the parking lot. It seems that the rain didn't cooperate with us, so we got the entire thing sealed, and then the rain came and washed about half of it away. So, they're coming back at no cost to the town, and they're gonna reseal this weekend. It's supposed to be drier. So, they'll seal on Saturday, so the park will, all, all the areas will be closed again. They'll stripe on Sunday. That's going to include some golf cart symbols that will help guide people from Barbados to the cart path to help folks, and we have some signage we're gonna put up to help folks as well.
Right.
Thank you very much, Dan. I don't have any comments other than thank you all for being here today. Thank you to everybody who attended virtually. Look forward to seeing y'all at the next council meeting. Have a great rest of the month. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Who's doing the seal coating?